Why don't we bring the Concord-Karlaugh School Committee meeting to order? Please note, we're on Zoom and being recorded.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting to order with the same notation.
Do we have any public comment?
All right, I'm sorry. Do you mind if we just do the roll?
Oh, right.
Maybe by the end of this, you won't have to.
Thank you.
Johnston.
E.I., here.
About here.
Modell, here.
Mustafi, here.
Great. And Court?
You're on mute.
Me, I'm sorry. I've been muted. Yes, I'm back. Thank you. I'm here. Booth, here.
All right. That's all.
We're supposed to go first, Court. You're the top of the order, aren't you?
Yeah, I thought I had, but I've been muted by the moderator.
We're trying to keep Court quiet.
There's a signal.
Right.
Do we have any public comment? And I guess you would indicate an interest by raising your hand in the participants section.
Well, I'm sorry, we still have people joining the call. I don't know if you want to give them another minute or something.
We can ask again at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
So we have one set of minutes from open session joint meeting of May 19th. Can I have the motion to approve those?
I would move approval of the minutes of the meeting, of the joint meeting of May 19th, 2020.
Is that for both committees?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Cynthia seconded for both. Let's do roll call.
Anybody have any
Sorry.
comments or additions, deletions? Good. Go ahead, Heather.
Oh, Booth.
Aye, for both.
Rainey.
Aye for both.
Modell.
Aye for region.
Mustafi.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Johnston.
Aye for both.
And Bout, aye for both. They passed unanimously. Thank you. Didn't have any CPS specific.
Do we have any chairs or liaisons reports? I have nothing.
I think we could mention the middle school committee, building committee. The draft of the feasibility report was available to the committee and draft form over the weekend. We were able to make comments and those comments were collected by the design team, SMMA and Hill International. And we'll see the next iteration of the feasibility report at a public meeting Thursday morning of the building committee, 7:30. I think that's a leadership meeting, I think, Heather.
Yes.
So it's not the entire committee. And then following that, it will get disseminated further.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything, anybody else?
I would like to give a report, but I actually would like to do it after our next agenda item because I know a lot of the folks on the call are probably here to hear that discussion. And then if they choose to stay, they could. But and we've invited some of the town officials to participate in that. So it seems like the best use of everyone's time if we just keep going. And I'll do my report after that discussion.
Okay. And I'm looking at this. I don't really see a place to do this. So I'll mention that there is a and David, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere here, but Karlaugh will be having a town meeting on the 20th of June.
We hope.
Right?
We hope so.
That's the plan, anyway. It'll be outdoors and socially distanced and all those good things. And so I just wanted to get that on everybody's radar. And we will probably talk about budgets and what we plan to do there later on, but just wanted to bring that up.
20th, rain date's the 27th, I think, because the next day is Father's Day. So they didn't want to inconvenience all the dads out there.
Okay, good. Okay, community use of fields and facilities.
I'm happy to open that up. And then it's truly a discussion. It's two pieces. They overlap a bit, and yet they don't. So the first really being about whether we're ready to open the school campuses up. We closed them down maybe the early part of April. Mostly out of concerns for social distancing after we had reports of that. I know there's definite community interest in use of the fields and such. Playground equipment is not allowed at this point. So just want to put that out there for clarity. That's in a later phase of the governor's reopening plan. So the playground equipment would have to remain closed. So we're really talking about access to the fields. And I think we've invited then the town officials who've been part of the town side of that discussion because some of their spaces are open. So Police Chief O'Connor is here, Health Director Susan Rask, and Deputy Town Manager Kate Hodges. Stephen Cranell joined us as soon as he's off his Zoom call with the select board. Just one comment. Stephen and I talked early that the campuses would be approached at a they're almost, most of our campuses have some mixed oversight, whether combination of schools in town. They really aren't, there are not as many spaces that are just schools or just town. Most of the school properties have some town elements, too. So we've been working with them as a campus on the whole. So I just want to clarify that, that we haven't taken the route of saying, for example, that the high school campus that the region oversees is closed, but Doug White on the town side opened. So we've been more on a campus approach. Just it seemed logical to do it that way. So I know Susan and the chief and Kate are here to dialogue with you and talk on the way they've approached some of the other sites in town. And then to help us make an informed decision that hopefully tries to balance the health and recreation needs of the community.
A week ago, we were hearing that there was, quote, "a quiet opening" was what I heard from some citizens. And it was quite public with the Journal last week that the town open spaces are available, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I don't know if Kate or Susan, if you want to outline for us the approach you took on opening some of the other spaces that had been closed and what that process was.
Yeah, sure. This is Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. So we we had to early on kind of cut off access and close the gate to the White Pond area. And that was pretty much the one park parcel, so to speak, that we limited access to. We didn't primarily limit access to the other park parcels in that people could still walk their dogs or, you know, walk around and socially distance at, say, Emerson, Rideout, and in the conservation areas. We put out a lot of information about how folks can socially distance when parking, how they can exit their vehicle and wait for somebody else to enter, exit their vehicle, that if you encounter somebody, you know, on a pathway, please move to the side, encouraging people to keep their dogs on leashes, et cetera. But in the case of White Pond, because where it's located on Plainfield Road and it's down a deep, you know, steep hill, the activities that were going on there were not necessarily visible. And what we were finding is that there was a lot of misuse of the property. And it really was taking up a lot of police time and energy and a lot of time on behalf of recreation and facilities to have to go down and clean up. I think people were just using it as a place that they could sort of order pizzas, bring pizzas to, drink beer, and behave inappropriately. And so that was really the only park that we kind of closed off. That was a big to do with the state, quite frankly. They the state has the boat launch there. And there's quite a few rules relative to White Pond and it being a kettle pond or a great pond of Massachusetts and having to stay open. But ultimately, in conversations with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they agreed to allow us to close it down temporarily. As of last Thursday, we made a plan with the facilities and parks and playground team to open up the parks a little bit more. This did not include the swing sets or playground. But it did include tennis courts and basketball courts. And so Thursday and Friday, the team put the hoops back up and the nets back up at the various basketball courts and the nets up at the tennis courts. And we did a strategic signage plan with temporary signs that we have now, although we're getting professionally done corrugated plastic signs that we're going to be able to zip tie to the fences or use on yard stakes that have, you know, graphic images of, you know, proper social distancing and what we're expecting people to do. And next week, well, the end of this weekend, next week, we're installing hand sanitizer stations at the entrances to all of the sports court areas. So in the case of the tennis courts, it's a little easier because you go in the gate one way and you come out the gate one way. We can station it there. The open basketball court areas, it's a little bit more challenging. And so we're doing that basically wherever the sidewalk meets the beginning of the court. And so we'll be doing that through facilities and trying that and again, putting up more permanent signage. So that's what we have. They were allowed to be open as of the 25th. Of course, that was a holiday and that was a Monday. So they were open over the weekend. We did not widely advertise that, but of course, people found out. I think for the most part, we found that people were respectful. The thing that we see the most is people playing basketball together. We've gotten quite a few complaints from neighbors that there's many, many people playing basketball and how can they be socially distancing? The last three days, we've had somebody stationed at both the Rideout area and Hunt, I'm sorry, the Rideout area and the Emerson Field, which is the Hunt Building. We haven't observed more than groups of three, and a lot of them are brothers and sisters playing together. Or in the case of today, there were four individuals playing and they all live in the same home. So I think people are being as respectful as possible. That said, of course, there's going to be people that are taking advantage of it. And so we're rolling dice, but it's been better. I can tell you the rise in vandalism when we shut things down was, you know, exponential, up to and including someone actually cutting the fence of the Emerson pool and dragging a picnic table in there and throwing it into the pool and then smashing a bunch of bottles. And so I'm not saying that, you know, that has any direct correlation, yes or no, because I'm, you know, I can't begin to understand that. But I think people were upset. And we're seeing that people are right now using things much more respectfully. So I don't know if the chief has any evidence to the contrary, but at least these past two days, Monday and Tuesday of this week, it's been better.
Susan or the chief, do you want to offer anything?
Susan?
No, I don't have much to add to that.
Yeah, no, I just, Kate, Chief O'Connor, Kate summed it up pretty well, some of the issues. But overall, we are having mostly compliance and people being respectful of one another. And, you know, as things, people get more educated about the issues, there was more compliance. In the beginning, it was difficult, but we're pretty good shape.
Part of the issue with White Pond also is that we ended up closing that at the time that most of the students who were not living in the community were either coming home from college or just out of school in general. And so, you know, they have a little bit of freedom with their own vehicles and they hadn't seen one another. And so most of what we were seeing were not grown adults necessarily, but emerging adults who were, you know, behaving like emerging adults do.
So I just have a comment about the basketball courts. I don't think families are well educated that they shouldn't be allowing their children to participate in pickup games. Because my son gets often asked to do so, and I say no. So I don't know if those people know that they shouldn't be or don't know, but I don't really have something I can point. I have the state guidance. Would it be nice just to have some clear signal from the town? So it might reduce.
We've put a bunch of signage up. And we also have a bunch of things that we've sent out to the community that says, you know, here are the best practices. Here's what you're supposed to do. You know, please limit it to people in your household. Please limit it to, you know, no more than 10 people in total. And, you know, we've said it's best to have three people on each side of the court and you can play half court, et cetera. Frankly, there are people who are going to not abide by that regardless of what we put out. I, too, have a couple of emerging adults, although less emerged than some in my household, who are getting text messages all the time from their friends. And, you know, it's up to his father and I to say, you know, that's a no or that's okay. And so that's what we're finding is that I think people have, they're trying to make up their own minds. And I'm not sure what level of increase of what we've already been doing is going to be able to convince people what they don't want to hear or don't want to do.
Is it easy to find someplace, either the recreation page or as we move forward, because things are going to change, obviously, with Phase Two?
Sure. So if you go to the town's website, ConcordMA.gov, right along the banner on the top is basically a button that says COVID-19 information. And it's updated daily several times a day. And there's lots of different things in there. And there are areas relative to the parks that are there. Whether people, you know, it has quite a few hits. It doesn't allow us to be able to track if those hits are from the same, you know, URL or not. So, you know, it has well over 50,000 hits, but it could be 5,000 for one household. I'm not sure about that. But people are seeing it. They're reading it. We're putting it out on social media. But they are surely willfully ignoring it. There are others that aren't.
Kate, you gave us the impression that if the pool is an example, closing it simply impairs enforcement, although the pool probably would have been closed anyway, the waiting pool. But in general, is your belief that enforcement and safety supervision is going to be better managed when the schools, like the town facility, have their open spaces open? Is that?
My observation and my personal feelings on the subject are that, you know, in the case of White Pond, when it was closed and closed off and that was communicated, people behaved badly. Now that it's open, less people are behaving badly. So I can't make a direct correlation, but yes, I would imagine the behavior that we've seen in and around Emerson and Rideout these past couple of days has been very respectful. And obviously, we weren't seeing a huge amount of respectfulness in and around Emerson in the case of, you know, having the pool closed, et cetera. But, you know, vandalism is going to come and go. So I guess I defer to the chief on whether he thinks, you know, the crime trends or whatever would go down. But I've been encouraged with the way people are behaving now. They're carrying in and out their trash, which they weren't doing before. They're parking not right next to one another. So.
So I would just say, first of all, we have very low crime rate in town, very low vandalism rate in town.
Congratulations.
We had some issues. What we do find is when you have more people in areas, people are not anonymous. So when you have anonymity, people are more likely to offend. So the more used the facilities, the less likely there'll be problems.
In the case of White Pond, we have some folks who go down, some mothers with their young children.
And I also have to say that I'm encouraged that, the last time I went there, which I checked in on Sunday, people were adequately socially distanced, but there were some emerging adults that were there, and they were behaving very respectfully. And as a matter of fact, when I walked around, one of them had said a curse word and the other one said, hey, there's kids over there. So it was kind of nice to see that, you know, when there's a mix of group there, they were at least relatively self policing.
Couple of questions and a comment. I did notice a number of families using the place structure at Rideout. I guess it was over the weekend. At the same time, I don't know what sort of signage there is about that, because I think people tend to feel, you know, if it's open, then the whole thing's open. That's one thing I would be not concerned about, but I think we ought to make an effort to to put some signage around our place structures at the elementary schools.
I would just say that what we tried were the lawn signs in that we didn't want to basically, you know, permanently affix something to the structure. That doesn't work because our lawn signs went missing effectively. So although it is not desirable to have to, you know, affix them to a piece of playground equipment, that's probably the way to go. And those are the ones that we've ordered. And it can be done, you know, with the, you know, a grommet inside that plastic, that corrugated plastic and with a zip tie. It's not permanent necessarily, but, you know, it probably would need some repainting when and if they come down. But I suspect that we're going to be cautioning people about, you know, social distancing pretty far into the future. So it might be worth the cost.
Do you have a dusk to dawn usage on the fields or is it, they're just open?
So we actually have a park bylaw for the town. So it is dawn to dusk, yes. Unless there's special permit or the field is lit and it's an athletic activity that they have permit for. So that's been the way it's always been. So there's no change to that.
When I think about our fields, there's one that concerns me a little. It's not unlike the geography of White Pond. It's the field behind Sanborn.
Yep.
I don't know if we might want to sort of block off the parking lot toward the front of the building. So it's a little harder for kids to drive their cars behind there and be somewhat shielded and then go down to the field, which is no, I don't think you can see it from anywhere other than the rail trail as far as a sort of a public way. But yeah, so that sort of jumps off the page at me.
I mean, some of these topics that we're talking on are discussions outside of coronavirus. That field has had damage in the past, and it's sort of an ongoing discussion. It hasn't happened in a long time. Generally, our sites are very well respected by the community. And I think I would expect the same. So.
Can I ask a question? This is really helpful. Also, first of all, Kate and Susan and Chief O'Connor, thank you so much for being here. Because I had said multiple times coming up to this meeting, I just feel like this is, these are decisions we can't make in a vacuum. So it's really, really helpful to have all over here. And so as we're thinking about this, if, to frame our discussion here a little, we need to try to decide when and how. And if we start to open the school fields, if we were to, let's throw out there, for example, say, decide tonight that we were going to at least give a shot at opening our fields to the same extent that the towns have. So, you know, whether it be some of them or all of them, fields, maybe courts, but not playgrounds, would there be concerns, and I guess I would say particularly from Susan or Chief O'Connor, but from anyone, concerns that you would have around ramifications of that? Are there any? Maybe not?
Well, I mean, I think it's great that people want to be outside and get exercise, and I would support that. My perception was that when the fields were still open a few months ago, there were pickup games and sports practices being played there. So my question would be, who's going to police that?
Right.
So that it doesn't happen.
So can I just tell you, so we've been talking about that on the recreation level because we have some very eager youth sports parents. And I'm sure that the school has very eager, you know, youth and high school parents and coaches. And so the process is that the fields have to be declared playable by the Parks Department. And then the Parks Department Director basically tells that to the Recreation Director, Ryan Kane. And then Ryan Kane issues the permits, and that's for youth sports. And so what happens is if that a youth sport group shows up and uses a property that they don't have a permit for or that they didn't have a timeframe booked out, you know, there are ramifications to that in up to and including, you know, basically suspension from being able to use the fields. And so I guess I would say if the worry was about coaches or, you know, older kids, perhaps that's something that the athletic director could be pulled into, much like the rec director, to say, if you want to have an organized something or other, you want to have captains practices, say, in August, you need to go through that office and you need to have some type of permit, even if it's just a verbal okay. And that there would be some measurable sanction for those who don't. And we've kind of broadcast that as far as to the rec leagues, you know, pretty regularly. And we're getting ready to have the, what would have been our spring meeting, because a lot of people, a lot of the groups want to do summer leagues and saying basically what can and can't happen. So.
So I was on the DPH. We have a conference call once a week with Department of Public Health and local boards of health. And they said that the youth sports guidance is coming soon. So hopefully, we'll have it within a week or so. And that will speak to how programs have to be run.
Baseball is the only one that has been out since yesterday. And the baseball is for practices in groups of five or less. And it has to be either batting practice or infield.
Where are you finding that guidance?
Ryan Kane sent it to me, so I can forward it along. But that being said, the Parks crew didn't skin the infields or do the infield work. And so we're not ready to allow them to do that as of Monday because the field isn't playable.
So my concern is the next tier down from organized sports is unorganized groups coming to the high school or our elementary schools are middle school.
So I could just say, our officers, when they're on patrol, hundreds of positive interactions with the young people in our community that are in our parks. So when we didn't have the health issues and so forth, it would not be uncommon to see an officer spending some time shooting some hoops or out on a field for a football to a kid running down the field, talking to kids skateboarding. I understand there's recommendations and there's guidelines of things that are coming out and that we have to follow. But I'm of a mindset that it's very important for some of these young folks to get outside, just like all of us, for mental health reasons as well. You know, policing it, we are, we're very fortunate. We don't have a lot of vandalism. Our officers can go through the properties. We may have a couple of hiccups here and there, but I think it's certainly manageable. I think there is a concern with some organized sports because, you know, I know certain sports are already looking forward to get, trying to get together, you know, to get one up on the fall. And hopefully, they're all able to play in the fall. But I think if there's clear messages, for the most part, people, if they're educated and they get the guidance, that they will follow it overall. And all this stuff, you know, the guidance and everything that we go through, this is all, it's all about risk management. That's what they're doing at the state level when they put these things out. And, you know, some of the risks, you know, I talk about is the mental health issues that I don't know that necessarily factor in some of the decision. I get the that I don't know that necessarily factor in some of the decision. I get the, the coronavirus, the COVID issue. But, you know, if we can get small groups of moving around, I think it is a, a good thing. We got, we're whatever park they're in.
Right. But chief, the current guidance says you cannot do that.
I, I know what the, I know what the, I know what the current guidance said. Why, I think I prefaced my comments that we know we have to follow the guidance.
Can I, I gotta apologize because I'm a, you know, pumpkin from Carlisle. But what, tell me a little bit about what we're trying to solve here. Like we, schools have fields and courts and things. And then the town has fields and courts. So I get it that the town has rec com, you know, town management, whatever purview over how that's managed. Does the school, apart from COVID, does the school have to go through rec com or town to administer its own field use in normal times?
I'll answer some of that. Anything that is in our oversight? No. There are a decent amount of property adjacent to or part of the school campuses that the town does oversee. So the fields at Sanborn, for example, the tennis courts at Willard, at least the Doug White field at the high school. So there's, there's shared properties in quite a few places. I think a lot of this discussion, David, is just about trying to stay on the same page. So that we all make decisions and know what each other's doing.
So that's, okay. So that's the baseline. So then what you're saying is like Doug White and those, it's a shared thing.
Yeah.
We use it. And again, you coordinate between school and in normal times, school, rec com, figure it out, right?
Yeah, there's, yeah, intimate relationships between people from Kate's office and Rick and our athletic director for one, Aaron Johnkis.
So now we have an overlay, which at least in Carlisle is, is like Susan's job, right? It's the board of health and the health administrator that says, okay, I don't care whose jurisdiction. You don't go on there till we say it's safe, right?
Well, certainly, yeah. In this case, it seemed prudent that Susan's part of the discussion. Cause we want to be sure that as we closed them for health related concerns, so opening them seemed.
So then the next thing, like the incidents, the vandalism, unless it's on school property, vandalism, kids, you know, playing five on five basketball and bumping up against each other. That's not our, that's not our pay grade, right?
Well, I, yeah. So the vandalism has certainly been part of my pay grade. And I.
School kids, deemed school kids?
If it's school property, there.
School property.
If it's school property.
Are we seeing vandalism on school property?
Yeah. Yeah. As to, I think the question that we're all debating and have somewhat referenced here. If we open them, is there going to be an expectation of monitoring and who would that be? In terms of abiding by the reopening guidelines and the social distancing best practices. And I, I think that's part of what we're spending some time circling here is how would we enforce any of that? Would we enforce any of that? What's the role of the schools in all of that? I think Jared and I will be fairly quick to say, we don't see that we have staff and you all are part of that budgeting discussion to assign to do that. So.
That would be when you're not like, to the point, May, if there's captains practice, if there's school team practices, you're clearly supervising that as a school.
Yeah. Anything that's booked through the, you know, high school teams, we are going to be able to do a certain, certainly oversight on that. It's more the pickup. And the kids, you know, we all know, and for good reasons, and we love this about them, the kids will organize themselves and just go out and have a pickup game of lacrosse was one of the examples earlier in the spring. And that's normally a really good thing. So it's just trying to figure out the tricky balance here.
But, but I, I get all that. I guess, you know, you guys have lots of other meetings, you know, through the town. We got school committee. We have a lot of stuff. So as a school committee person, what do we need to focus on, on this dialogue?
Are we, are we ready to open things up and see how it goes? Or do you want to wait? That's to me, the bottom line question.
Laurie, are you saying, are we ready to open? Or are you saying, are we ready to open when the state advisory changes?
No, the state advisory phase one would include our fields being open.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm hearing from the chief, if I'm correct, is that in enforcement of anything that obviously requires attention is something that his officers routinely do. And I'm hearing from the, the side of organized groups and permitting that we solve problems after the fact, when there's been a controversy between user groups to see who in fact permitted properly and who didn't. Is the permitting business office and do you like the town side have a, a folder full of pending applications for organized groups coming on K eight facilities?
For school dude, we do. A number of, but I don't, I can't name any, I haven't seen them. Sheila Butler manages that. But so right now, I don't think anyone's signing up for anything.
Okay.
I would also like to define what we're actually debating for tonight here. I think there are two different questions at play. One could be opening the fields like the town has for casual use with social distancing. I think the question of organized sports and organized groups should be seen as a distinct question. Because we could conceivably, we could agree to open them for casual use, but say, we're not opening to large, opening to groups yet.
Right. And to Susan's point, there isn't guidance out yet about organized sports.
So that I feel like sports, I feel like we just, I don't even want to look at it tonight because we don't have the guidance yet. We, I don't think we should be looking at it.
No, we have time to prepare for it.
Right. At some point. But I think the, to David's point, what do we need to do tonight right now? I think that what we need to answer right now is, do we feel comfortable opening school fields and grounds for casual individual use?
And I'll be the first, we were there Sunday and there already is a little bit of that. We're not, you know, nobody's standing there chasing people off. There were a couple of kids at the skate park. There were a couple of kids wandering, you know, just sidewalks and things. I, I think, you know, I think there is a readiness to allow that. And then, you know, if we get complaints that there's issues coming up, the chief and I'll talk and we'll work to figure that out.
So question for the chief, trying to imagine the future here. Would you advise us to start this with limited parking? So that it was not even practical to have a large congregation coming in, in automobiles? Does that make your enforcement more, more realistic?
Well, I, I don't, limiting parking for, I'll just use a different example. Limiting parking on location doesn't necessarily solve people coming to the location because people will park in other locations and walk. So I, I don't know that that necessarily solves an issue.
I think it was, my point was, would it help you by discouraging even a remote possibility of, of a hundred cars coming to the high school for, for passive recreation that then became a congregation that you have to deal with?
I, I think if there was, if there was any type of congregation, we would certainly go to a location and, and interact and. It's not something that in, in normal times that we generally see that, that type of gathering.
I think you're going to open with.
I guess, I guess my, I guess my, my, my answer is, is maybe, but maybe not. Like I don't want to give you a clear answer because people will park in other locations and walk or take bicycles or.
Yeah. Okay. So, so what I'm hearing you say is that we could dial it down if we had to, rather than taking the approach of restricting it now and then opening it later.
If, if there was a problem, I'd communicate with Dr. Hunter and.
Okay.
Have to shoot back to you.
It seemed to me we could open the fields for casual use along with the same guidelines that the town has for other fields and parks. And, you know, I would, I would have the stipulation that, you know, if the experience shows that those rules aren't being adhered to, we could, we'd close them again. I have a concern about the permits. Once we start issuing them, I assume there's something in there about us being able, the town being able to revoke those permits for whatever reason. I think in this period of time, we want to make sure we're not going to get anybody pointing at their permit. If we get a resurgence and deem it appropriate to go back to where we are right now as far as closure goes. It would help permits that are, that are given out would, would have that stipulation made very clear.
One other question just to throw into the mix, would there be, and I'm not, this isn't a leading question. I'm not sure where it would go. But would there be any value to rolling this out somewhat gradually? You know, the, I don't know, elementary school campuses first, then the middle school campus, then high school, something like that. Or, or is, or is there no value to that? And maybe I'm wondering mostly from a policing standpoint, Chief O'Connor, would, would you feel that there was a chance that if we opened all of them at once, you all of a sudden have, you know, a huge responsibility of these different schools to check out and, and, and police? And would it be easier to start gradually? And maybe the answer is now it doesn't matter.
The, the only place that you, we, I would anticipate seeing an impact would be at the high school. Because I, I think that there's the place that, you know, high schoolers would want to gravitate to.
Yeah. Has the most resources and yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I don't know that that would be a, a big impact.
Okay. That's good to know. Then, okay, then just to kind of start to wrap this discussion towards a, a decision point. It sounds like there's somewhat of a comfort level here to, at this point, open the fields and campuses along the same lines that the town has casual use, not organized sports organizations, not playgrounds.
Not pickup even. So that's the thing. So I would ask the, for example, the lacrosse nets not get put out because lacrosse is not permitted. I mean, I guess individuals could come up there, but it's, you know what I'm saying?
So the, the only issue with that is if you're by yourself and you just want to go and shoot around, you're going to find something else to shoot the ball into.
So we could put them out. I just, I'm, I think we have to make it clear that only people in the same family, you know, as the guidance, we have to be very clear because people are just going to think that it's open for pickup games unless we're really, really clear.
Yeah. So, so we might have to think about signs like the town has done, similar to what Kate was talking about. That we attach, I guess, I don't know, Laurie or Jared, tell me, attached to something.
Well, can the town be responsible for the signage at the Doug White? Cause that's really their facility.
Yes, I'm sure I can coordinate with Stephen. So we, we've done the signs before for triple E and stuff. And we just split it up. Jared was a big part of that and they did their fields and we did ours.
I gotta ask you guys, you know, we're 45 minutes into this.
Yeah, agreed.
Is this a board decision? This sounds like it's administrative. I mean, I don't want to belittle it, but it's an administrative thing. Why is the?
Well, I brought it to you, David, because there's very mixed opinion on this and I wanted to have a discussion. I do, I do have authority to just open. So I think if we're ready to do that, I will assure you of the safety messages that will go out and the signages and some patrolling to the best that we can and communication with the police and the town officials. I think we need to open and see what happens.
Okay, let's do that.
So I think all we need here is, is there anybody who would be opposed to the superintendent going ahead, opening fields for casual use with the similar guidelines that the town has for our fields?
My answer is I'm, I'm not only not opposed, I'm actually supportive of it. But I'd, I'd urge some careful monitoring and the school committee. Although it's not our job to get into management affairs directly, we'd still like to hear these reports. And I, I would like to revisit the subject of parking at the first evidence that that might facilitate any, any reduction of congregations that are a public health hazard. Cause I think that's our first line of defense. That's most practical and most easily enforceable to control numbers. It's how we control numbers at Walden Pond. We control people with parking. And it's a, it's a time honored, it's a time honored solution.
Okay. Does that, does that feel comfortable? Laurie, do you have what you need from us to move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Then, but before we let everyone go.
Well, we have, there's another part of this that I think some of you are interested in.
Yeah.
So I'll try to, I'm going to be very succinct. So it's clear, I think, what the discussion point is. We have multiple summer usage of our schools is the topic. I have, we have moved our programming to remote. So the buildings are available. Concord Recreation, after receiving guidance, I'll speak for you for just a minute, Kate. After receiving guidance from the state last night and after a lot of preparation ahead of that, is anxious and eager to meet a growing demand and need for childcare and child activities, probably two for the summer. And so they're looking to use the high school and Alcott so they can spread their programs out and be able to accommodate more kids while meeting the guideline requirements. I just had to put that in a little bit of context because we do have other requests for the building that have been longstanding, mostly around Star Camp and some of the Patriot camps, which at this point don't have guidance for sports. So it's a little tricky to have that whole conversation because we don't have, they're not allowed to open yet at this point. I think too, that the somewhat of what we just talked about with the coaches and some of the access the kids are used to having eventually to the building, maybe may end up being part of the discussion. I would equate the fitness room with the gyms that are in phase three that are not open yet. So I'm not sure that's a conversation we need to have at the moment. So I just want to give you the big picture. Concord Rec is the, is the permitted available group to come in with a very backlogged need in the community. So I would recommend that we support the request and Jared's here and Russ, our facilities managers here. We've already been talking with them and looking on how we're going to collaborate together to follow the safety protocols. And then I think as other guidelines changes, change in phase two and three roll out, we can revisit how things are going with Concord Rec. And if there's options to accommodate any of the other requests, depending how the summer's going and what those guidelines look like. So I think that's the bottom line is just similar to the field discussion. I have, I have all authority to say yes to this. I just felt the need, given the big picture and the safety practices and the fact that we, we have not had kids in the same place in a long time, that it would be a little bit of a board opinion to give me a blessing if, if nothing else before we let them go.
Can I just add one thing, Laurie?
Of course.
The Star and Patriot programs actually are licensed, will be licensed camps. They're not just sort of sports leagues. So we view them as camps too. And each camp has to have access to bathroom facilities in usually a classroom or area that they can set up as their infirmary. So that's what's involved with allowing those programs to use the buildings.
Right. Thank you. Just a reminder, the Stars camp is an outside group. So that's not school related. And I, I'd like, I have a little discussion to have with Aaron, just on the Patriots camps and how those are operating right now. So I think Concord Rec is the first thing for us to talk about.
Laurie, when you say Patriots camps, you'd have a basketball?
Basketball is one of them. Yeah. Yep.
It used to be part of Concord Rec, actually.
Yeah. So we've got more to talk on, on those. I'm not ready to ask you about those yet. So Concord Rec is the discussion for right now.
And to clarify, again, we could decide to support Concord Rec using the buildings. And then when the others come up, get to the point where we say or realize at that point, you know, there isn't space for others because of all the social distancing and this is it. you know, there isn't space for others because of all the social distancing, and this is it and nobody else is in. Or we could choose to include the others. But they are distinct decisions, not one leading to automatic approval of the others, correct?
Yes.
But, but, but I kind of need to know, because I can't license camps if they don't have access to the interior of the buildings. So camps are coming to us saying, can we be licensed if we meet the state guidelines? And I have to know whether they can use the school buildings or not, so I can give them an answer.
So let me just say that the reason why we asked for Alcott and the high school, in addition to Hunt and the Emerson Field, is kind of threefold. The first being that those are licensed camp sites and they're licensed under the EEC. And so they can be considered childcare facilities. If we say went over to rent a church or, you know, the Monument Hall, those are not licensed areas. We haven't had them inspected, and so we can't, we can't do that. The other is that we wanted to have the groups within walking distance of a pool or some type of water source. And when the state put out the guidelines for the camps, one insurmountable goal that are regulations and rules that we have is that we can't transport them. And so having them over at Harvey Wheeler, for example, and then, you know, taking a van and bringing them to White Pond is not something we can do, because the regulations for distancing, at least for the, for this Phase Two and Three, is, is something that we can't meet. And the other is for convenience of, of the parents of the campers, because we have to have groups of 12, 10 campers and two adults or two camp counselors. And they aren't going by the total number in the program anymore. They're going by square footage of the interior used spaces. And so we're able to have four groups only at Hunt, and then five groups at Alcott and five at the high school, understanding that we're only taking over, you know, a small portion of, of both of those schools with some outdoor field space and the ability to walk to the swim area. And right now, we have 140 spots that we opened, but we're going to go to 150, we think. They're all full, have a waiting list, and it's 806 individual households. So when I say, you know, they have X amount of, some people have registered for two weeks, others for three. And if we're able to expand more than that, it would appear that we would have to do so on a lottery system. So there is a huge need. And, you know, we're, we're basically over a barrel if we don't have the other way to, you know, where to put these people.
All right, so I, I remain to feel like they're separate discussions, because we're the ones who, we need to agree to offer the space to the other camps. And I'm not comfortable as the person who does that until, until we see how Concord Rec works out. So it could be the other camps are slowed down, and I realize how challenging that is. But given where we are and how much there is to figure out here, I think slow and steady is a better way to go.
Lori, what is our custodians contract? In other words, don't, don't we have to employ them to clean the buildings as opposed to letting Concord Rec take care of that?
Well, so they work all summer anyhow, cleaning the building. So I don't know that one has to preclude the other. We've, Stephen and I had a very quick conversation today about the custodial services. There's more to talk about perhaps, but our people are there anyhow. And we brought them back full time yesterday, so.
Right, in terms of the charge back to Concord Rec is what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, we could sort all that out, sure.
Okay, is this not, considering the amount of cleaning that needs to be done, that's probably?
Yeah, and I, I think we need to get a little closer to it and just see if it's going to pull our people away too much from any other work we have to do. And if there's additional, if it's just a charge back, that's fine. If there's any additional staffing, we'll have to figure that out too, so.
And do classrooms need to be cleaned out, like that wouldn't normally happen, or does that happen?
So the teachers are setting, getting their rooms into their normal state for the summer this week. So there may be that we've got to clean it for access for Concord Rec and then go back and clean it again later. We run summer school, other summers, and are used to doing that, so I, I think we're okay.
I was just talking about the high school, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess the little bit I could add is that I think the Alcott could accommodate Concord Rec in its entirety along with, with Hunt. The reason for the high school, as I understand it, is just further dispersal. And if there were multiple cases of COVID in one facility, you don't shut down the entire program, you only shut down one facility. So by having three facilities, not two, there's a lot more versatility or capacity to keep most of a program running, even if we had a resurgence in, or cases, I should say, in one building.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Court, because that, that's what it is. It's 50 kids max. And so if somebody gets sick and we have to shut down one, it isn't, it isn't shutting down 100 people if you have 50 and then 100 at Alcott. So that was the idea.
I think the, as a practical matter, and I don't want to waste our time on this, others will deal with it, is bathroom facilities and how those can be allocated and dedicated, because I think that's going to be a key public health consideration in any of these facilities where, where kids are congregating. But that's, that's for another day. So I think the big issue here, and my way of thinking is not can and should Concord Rec have access to the facility they, they have for years. I know from personal experience at both facilities, and they've, they've done well by the schools. The, the issue is the spillover issue to the other camps. And I think Lori's right, we'll just do, do our best and move as expeditiously as we can, but to take care of one, one program and understand the full implications first, with regrets to other potential users that might have to wait a little bit and undergo that, that stress and difficulty, both for their organizations and their constituents. I don't see a way around it.
Yeah. I have one question also, and I'll weigh in here. Given all the information so far, I'm comfortable with supporting the superintendent's recommendation to, to make the spaces available. My one question was, if we get to a point where there is a resurgence, where we have multiple cases coming back, whose decision is it as to whether we shut down a facility? Whether, you know, let's say there are cases at multiple facilities, whether all of camp has to be closed for a week or for the rest of summer? Again, this, I'm talking worst case scenarios, but if it comes back and we have to deal with closures, is that a school decision or a town rec decision? Kate, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. The camp guidelines actually have us having to submit a plan for that to, back, back to them, to the EEC. And we would happily submit a copy of that to both committees and anybody else, for that matter. That basically says initially, I can tell you what we're planning, is that if someone in one of the groups tests positive, then we're going to have the entire group of those 10 children have to quarantine for 14 days. If it's in two or more groups, then we're going to be shutting down the site for at least 14 days and potentially not, not coming back. We're kind of giving it the old college try. And I think people, you know, want to get back to work and kids want to have a bit of a summer, but we absolutely aren't going to just continue our revolving door of 14 days on, 14 days off. We just, it's not, it's not even workable staff wise. Yeah.
I would add to that, that if we get even one case, we will be in touch with the Department of Public Health, with their epidemiologists, to see how they want to proceed. And if we get a cluster of cases, that it'll be a whole new world of trying to deal with it. But, but we'll just do whatever DPH tells us needs to be done.
Okay.
And Heather, to your point, I have plenty of decision making to do on my own coming up. They can decide whether camp stays open or closed.
Great. As long as we're on the same page, I'm happy.
For your, for whatever peace of mind, we're erring on, on the side of caution that we want to try to do this for the community, but it, it could be that we put all this in place and we're open for three days and, you know, and we're, we're prepared to disappoint people if we have to.
Sounds like our thinking about the fall.
What may go without saying, Lori, is that I would hope you and the business office go ahead and commence conversations with the other likely users so that at least some, some what-if scenarios and potentials are being laid out, so that if you and Susan are of a mind that it's time to move, we know what, you know what advice to bring our way or what recommendations you bring our way.
Yeah, so Jared's all queued up to reach out to them after this meeting and explain where we're at and keep them really informed.
Okay. Kate didn't say the words, "hope for the best and prepare for the worst," but that's what I'm hearing, that we need to be prepared for, for tough times, and we need to be able to move very quickly. And Susan indicates that's exactly what she's going to do.
Great. So once again, I'll say, Lori, do you have what you need from us now then?
I do, thank you.
Great, great.
Finally, Lori, just, we didn't mention dates. Concord Rec expects to be out of there August 16th, which I hope gives you time to do what you need to do. It has in the past, I think.
I'm sure we can work it out, yeah.
Okay. Great, then if, if that's all you need from us on that, I think we, you don't need, we don't need to vote or anything like that. This is again officially your decision, right?
Right.
And I think we've wrapped this up. And Kate and Susan and Chief O'Connor, we very much appreciate you being here. And you're welcome to stay for as long as you'd like, but we won't keep you here.
Had my fill of Zoom for the day, thanks.
My third call.
We won't be too hurt, we need.
Everybody, thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We also, we also had Anna McCown from Concord Rec here, and probably Ryan was in the group as well.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you to them also. All right, I hear a few leaving. All right, thank you, everybody. That, to David's point, was kind of long, but I think very valuable. I think this, these discussions are not easy, but important.
Well, and Heather, if I might, I think, I think the public should get as visible, audible a public debate as they can to, to know Lori's thinking and how she's putting it in front of us to, to discuss and debate.
Yep.
I think it's reassuring.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
So Concord Rec is going to be the, doing all the operations. So it's really up to them to adhere to all of the regulations and procedures that are put in place. So for us, it's really just allowing them to come back to the facilities they've used in the past. So there is really not too much of discussion. And taking more facilities out of the stock, public stock, actually doesn't help bring down the rates of COVID-19 spread, as kids will end up congregating in smaller areas. Less, less public open spaces, more people in, in what is available out there. So we really have to be very, very mindful that we don't necessarily, you know, by trying to be, trying to protect the public, we're actually exaggerating the problem. And high school students and all of our students are, you know, mentally, they need to be outside. It's, it's almost summer, so.
So Lori, I do have a quick question I didn't think of until now. Do you feel like once the camps start up, you really want to restrict access to the regular public?
I'll work with, you know, I think there'll probably be some protocols that we will put in place to separate. I think we can do that in both places. The space is big enough. And, you know, I think to some extent, it might be like when school's in session, fields aren't available when camp is in session, but once they're out, maybe. So we'll figure all that out, so it's divided up.
I want to take a lot of the burden off of you.
Yes, thank you.
So I think, I would hope that the rec could propose something and that, you know, you, Russ could take a look at it. But yeah, I think you're right, just talking about the sharing of daytime versus after school.
Yeah.
And, and I would add to that, that in past years, the school personnel have had a much bigger presence when we've been hosting Concord Rec. And we won't have that physical presence in the form of teachers and summer school administrators the way we have in the past. So I think we, we do need to see that teacher classrooms are buttoned up well, so that they are ready to go in September. That's always the test of what happened in the summer is who's squawking, looking for missing materials, because they got moved a few rooms over during the summer when visitors were there. So we'll have to be doubly cautious or careful this year.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm confident it can all get worked out and it'll be, be just fine.
Yep, good.
Great. Well, thank you for bringing everybody in, Lori. That was really helpful for inviting the others. I think that unless there are any more questions, I think we can move on to old business.
Heather, I was actually going to do a quick report on.
Oh, yeah, let's go back to that, sorry. Thank you.
Few days in a week here.
Yes.
This is really just a superintendent's report out of order, and it's just verbal. But I don't think we should meet without me talking through some of what's happened the last few, few days. You know, clearly, the national environment has grown very tense racially. That started, I guess, a week ago. And certainly, we were responsive to that and to the impact that was having. And then unfortunately, over the weekend, one of our high school students posted a very inappropriate video of him, of himself saying racial slurs. And that's had a really huge impact in terms of the community, whether kids saw the, saw the post directly, heard of the post, understood. I think it took what's been a national tension, brought it right into our own living rooms. I guess literally. And then even on top of that, to then have riots in Boston on Sunday night, when this happened on Saturday. And we have 140 families who come to our schools, living in Boston. It's just been a really racially focused few days. And, and challenging in some ways, because we are so spread apart from each other that a lot of how we might respond and give people an opportunity to connect and give kids a place to talk, it's been really more challenging. So I just wanted to share the things that have happened so far in terms of our response and our beginnings of what will need to be a long-term plan. We're in that short-term responsive mode. Yesterday morning, no, actually, let's start with Sunday morning. Mr. Mistrula and I met with the high school incident management team yesterday. All of the incident management teams met. We met with the high school staff on Monday morning and shared with them and spoke to them on opening conversations with kids and acknowledging what was happening, at least to a place of being sure they knew that we were there to hear their concerns and reach out to them. The incident management teams all strategized individual students they thought needed support or families or both. And individual connections have been made constantly across all five schools in the last 36 hours. The Center for Parents and Teachers, in just an unbelievable turnaround time, took an event that's scheduled for tomorrow and shifted the focus to include race-based discussions for parents on how to talk to kids. We're looking at a meeting with Boston families to try to offer our willingness to really name some of our challenges here. And we'll get to the part of how unacceptable this is when I finish rattling off this list. And then we're looking at some sessions next week. We have two longtime consultants who've been working with us on the cultural competency work throughout the last three years. And we'd like years. And we'd like to be able to invite, um, families in to talk more about race and some of the tensions that we're experiencing and how they're feeling and just be able to open up the really hard dialogue that needs to happen. Um, so I'll end all that by saying, you know, this is a school district that finds everything that's happened unacceptable. And certainly things happening among our own student population, very unacceptable. Um, we've been working with Concord Police in terms of response and actions and consequences, all of that. As hard as it is to wait, it's still playing out. Um, and we believe we need to open a dialogue that helps us all to do better at this. Um, I think to name it as work to be done despite all of our efforts of cultural competency and everything else to, to, to say we don't have racism going on within our own schools. And I've heard a few stories just in the last two days from families that make it certain that we have racial issues, um, that we name that and we're open to that dialogue and can work together to make it a better place for everyone. Um, I said this afternoon on a call with a dad that, you know, maybe we can't change the whole world, but I'm pretty sure we have some influence to make the Concord and CCA, Concord Public Schools and CCHS a better place for families of all, all backgrounds. So we're committed to that and really, really want to use this as an opportunity to ensure more progress happens. So I just felt the need to name that out loud. I don't know that there's much to, you know, there's no big discussion or decision to be made. Certainly your feedback and thoughts are welcome and I'm sure ones you want to share publicly. And then it will be an ongoing discussion.
Thank you, Lori. Sorry, Court, you looked like you were about to say something. Go ahead.
Well, I think, I think we've all had this on our, our minds, uh, every, every waking moment. And then maybe even while we tried to sleep, uh, for a number of days or some of us would say a number of decades. Uh, uh, I, I want to commend you, Dr. Hunter, for your message last night. Uh, it was shocking and totally expected, uh, for you to say to us, we have racism in our schools. Shocking because we've worked so hard and this is not who we want to be. Uh, and expected because we know we've been dealing with these problems locally and nationally since the founding of this country. And we've had not one, but, uh, multiple, uh, episodes of, uh, racism and hate in our high school over, over the decades that I've been associated with it. I, I shared with your Metco director today, uh, that, uh, that in the sixties, I was protesting, uh, and for, for racial justice. And we've come a long way and it feels like we're starting yet again. So I would say to this community, I'd say to this school committee, um, that's what we're doing. We're starting, we're starting anew today. We're starting, we're moving uphill every day with this. And, uh, what we're going to be told, I think by others is, uh, push harder, um, make this more discussable. Uh, use what you said last night to the community as a model, uh, for us to be, be able to call, call racism what it is. And shoulder more responsibility for solutions. So, so thank you for stepping out with that. And I, and I want to say, uh, you didn't ask us permission to make a bold statement like that. You, you owned that yourself. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. And I, I, I won't echo everything Court said because he said it very succinctly for all of us. But, um, I do have to just echo two small things. One, what you said about Court, this being not who we want to be. And I felt the same way. And I've been struggling with that, that it is hard to acknowledge and say that there is racism in our system because, because we want so deeply for that not to be the case. So it is hard to acknowledge it and so incredibly important that we do. So again, thank you, Lori. Um, and the, the other piece that, the one other small thing that I just wanted to point out was again from Andrew Yamiche's email that he sent out. He said something about the importance, not only of black and brown Americans standing up, but of the white allies. And I just, as we all sit here on this call, um, representing a lot of white people, um, I, I want to ensure that we are all actively white allies in this fight against racism, not just standing by waiting for other people to do something. And I think a lot of what you've just told us about what you're doing is part of that. And so thank you. And, um, just want to make sure that we voice our support in that.
Um, I just, I want to, I've seen some things that I, I think are important in this discussion that's going on now nationally. And, uh, and it's the difference between being non-racist and being anti-racist. And I think it is time to be anti-racist. I don't think anybody my age can walk around saying they're, they're not racist. Uh, you know, just part of my upbringing, uh, my life in the United States as a white male, um, I can't help but have, uh, prejudices that I don't even like to recognize. Um, and that's who we are. And, and I think on some level that has to be okay. But we have to, at the same time, be willing to be anti-racist. Um, and my hope is that we can find a place for that in our approach within the schools that's appropriate for the age groups, that's within the law. Um, you know, I see these things happen in our own community, uh, and within the schools. Uh, I think we should have the harshest penalties possible, uh, for these events. And we should root this out to the best of our ability. And I think it's also important, you know, this is an opportunity for us to, uh, help to educate our Concord and Carlisle kids through the experience of our Boston kids. Because not only did they see some rioting, but they also saw a lot of very good people protesting in Boston and being anti-racist. And, uh, they're going to feel that a lot more than we are out here. Um, we had a very nice and subdued, uh, protest on Sunday night up around the monument. Um, but it's nothing like what's happening in the city and in the cities across America. So my heart goes out to those folks. Um, but I'm also proud to see people out and protesting even at their own risk, um, health-wise, given COVID. So that's, that's what I hope we can, I hope, I hope this is a bigger discussion happening in America and that it continues and that we get to a level we have not been able to get to. Um, and, uh, to the degree that we can find a way to be, uh, a part of that, I think would be a huge benefit to our student body and to our communities. Thanks.
There's a lot of work to do.
So. I, I, I do have a, um, I just wanted to add, I do have, um, actually high schoolers. Um, and, um, the timing of this incident, um, coincides with what is, um, happening around the country. And I have to say, it activates a lot of our, uh, high school students. Uh, a lot of, of the students that turn out, um, to the peaceful, very peaceful, very, uh, beautifully run, uh, protest in Concord, a lot of our students are, uh, going to the protest and, and participating in some ways and, uh, protesting, uh, on Instagram and, uh, and they're on social media, uh, the injustices. So, um, kids, kids are, uh, responding, uh, to hatred. And, uh, you know, this incident, uh, showed that there, we, you know, that there is need for, uh, responding, right? There is, uh, uh, racism still lives, um, even in, um, communities like, like ours. Um, so, um, and I just wanted to, uh, add that the, uh, opportunities like, such as Metco, where we have, uh, students that don't look like, um, uh, majority of our, uh, Concord students that come from different social, economic, uh, places, um, uh, opportunities like the, uh, lacrosse, Harlem, lacrosse league, uh, where, uh, where students, uh, play sports together. Those opportunities really teach a lot of, um, tolerance and understanding and, and see, and humanizing, uh, someone that doesn't look like you and, and, and seeing those commonalities. Uh, so, um, a lot more work to be done. And, um, you know, if, for, for those that have seen the video, you, you can unsee, uh, unsee it. So, um, I'm really hopeful that the boy gets, you know, that the person that, um, came up with this, um, gets help. And, uh, I'm hoping that, um, we will not, those situations will be, won't occur in the future, um, in, um, in, in our school.
Thanks for all those words, everyone. Good to know that we are united in our view that that kind of thing is unacceptable and we'll fight against it.
And the kids are united in that view. It's, it's really, it's really good to see that they were really outraged for many reasons.
Lori, thank you for leading us in this.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all the resources that you have put out, um, there for the families. It's, it's, they came so quickly. So, um, having the resources at, you know, at, at, um, at your fingertips, uh, to, to know how to talk to the kids and, um, get educated, if you're not, it was very helpful. Thank you.
No, that's, that's reflective of this team and, and some of the work we've done up until now that we, we did have things ready quickly, which was, was really positive. So.
Thanks for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Lori, did you have other things to report on as well?
No, I think, no, no. I mean, we're, we'll be looping to the, you know, next week we can do an update on the task force and, uh, each of the working groups and building based groups are meeting this week. Um, so we'll be able to connect where the, where we are in that work. Um, I did have a commissioner phone call this morning. He is adamant we will have directives. I mean, I've, we haven't heard him be this strong that guidance will be more than guidance. It will be directives to a larger, much larger scale than we've had because he wants consistency, um, and that we should have those by June 15th. So I think that will complement the timing of the task force and it may make some of the work more in terms of interpretive rather than generative, which could be a positive too. So.
Good to know. Thanks. Um, then, okay, in that case, I think we're moving to where I almost jumped us ahead to being old business, unless I'm skipping anything else.
No, and I think these can be shorter conversations, I'd, I'd expect. Um, do you want me to hop onto retirement incentive?
Yeah, you had an update on the retirement incentive plan, right?
Yeah. So I, and I'm actually bringing a recommendation too. I appreciate all the conversation we had and you asked us to gather some data, which we did in collaboration with the CTA and CCTA, which I think was very helpful. Um, we did a wide span, wide scan of districts for anyone offering incentive. We found one, um, Peabody Public Schools is offering $5,000 for teachers with 20 years in the system. We found a lot of folks trying, sorry, Jared?
I think it was seven. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. Okay. Thanks for the correction. Um, we, we heard a lot of people thinking about it, but not others that had actually act, acted on it. Um, results of the soft poll of the unions, um, brought low levels of interest for this year, um, moderate to low for next year at the CCTA. Fair, pretty strong response in terms of interest for a year from now for the retirement of June 21 at the CTA. Um, so my recommendation, and given the timing of where we're at, is that we don't pursue this right now, but we revisited in the building of FY22 and the early days of that, which is gonna be in, we're gonna barely have finished 21 when that starts. But, uh, I think it's worth revisiting at that point. I think given the timing and where we are here in June already, um, for the limited response we had immediately, I don't think that's something I would, um, put at the top of the priority list. So that was my recommendation, that we put it on hold for the FY22 budget process.
That makes sense to me. I, I guess I would say to anybody, does anybody have questions with that or, or concerns?
I think it was good that we went through the effort.
I do too.
If there were more takers, we'd probably be having a different conversation.
Yeah. And I think the tie, I think we're all just in so many unknowns. It's hard to switch gears that fast. I totally understand why the response is low right now that, you know, people are gonna try to stick this out and gear up for what's coming. So.
Too much uncertainty.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that research, both of you, Lori and Jared. That's certainly.
Yeah, I know. And a shout out to the union leadership who did, did, you know, responded quickly to help us get the feedback. So.
Great. Many thanks to them also then.
Yeah.
Would you have fans?
Yeah, I think Jared's, we're chugging away here to try to rebuild the budget. So that's underway. Jared's, um, doing a lot of the salary work, instead of meetings with the building level administrators. Uh, so we don't have a lot to report there because that's just a few days into that. Um, Wally, I did think we would share out a little of our conversation with the Carlisle Finance Committee, just in terms of, David, I'm sure can voice some of this too, because he's been so close to it. Just an update on the Carlisle Town Meeting process, since it's a little different approach than what is happening in Concord.
Sure. Um, Lori and I give a little synopsis of our conversation with, uh, the Chair of the FinCom, uh, Director of the, uh, and, you know, basically, we were looking for some clarity on, uh, the regional school district should approach the upcoming Carlisle Town Meeting relative to, uh, some sort of a budget proposal. And, uh, both through conversation with them and, and conversation with David, um, that, you know, what, what they're seem to be doing right now is sort of, uh, you know, voting at a town meeting, a 112 budget is primarily the approach with the expectation that there will be another town meeting, uh, in the fall, a special town meeting in the fall. Um, and, uh, we will work to try to do that, our town meeting in Concord, uh, at a similar time that Carlisle does theirs. And that would be the time that we would bring a, a revised, uh, budget proposal, uh, for the warranted article, um, to both communities. And, you know, we'll have more information. There'll still be uncertainties, but, um, you know, by the time of those town meetings, it's very likely, uh, the fall will be underway from a teaching standpoint. So we'll have some sense of what we're up against. And, uh, we did talk about, um, you know, where we are in this process of, uh, zero basing sort of a three-pronged budget approach. And, uh, uh, and, and, and taking into account the work of the task force that's coming up in those budgets, which is one of the reasons that it would have been very difficult for us to put a budget in front of either town right now. Um, that, you know, was as good as one that we could put up sometime in, uh, late July, early August. And they say, he seemed to think that was perfectly a good approach and then no need for us to bring, you know, a warranted article for the, for the regional budget at this time. David, anything that I missed in there? Do you want to?
Uh, no, I think that's fine. And I mean, the, uh, what I related.
And I mean, the, what I related, what I relayed to Wally over the weekend was the reason Carlisle wanted a town meeting was really, had very little to do with budgets and more about an open streets project, a safety project that they would like to have completed this summer, I think. Because there's some matching funds that are sunsetting and some people make it a priority. And so that was kind of the driver. And Carlisle was under kind of a mistaken assumption that they could just have a town meeting about that issue and kick the can down the road on the budget. And then they learned that, no, they have to. If you have a town meeting, you must have a budget, which I'm sure Jared knows. So if you have no town meeting, you can do the 112. So that kind of backed them into having a town meeting with a budget and that the budget guideline is being set. In fact, I have to jump off at seven because we're meeting the FinCom on the Carlisle Schools budget. But as it relates to the CCHS budget or the regional budget, it's already been said it's 112, as Wally said. And everybody knows everything's gonna get revisited anyway in the fall. So I think they're fine with the 112. And there's really no, no need to go any further until, you know, when the fall rolls around and we all know more. We'll be back, we, I won't be there, but we'll be back to both towns with hopefully the same budget and the same outcome, right? Which, not the same outcome as this, but I mean, the two towns will both agree created discontinuity.
David, I listened to FinCom meeting, their own meeting yesterday. And I'm not sure they're going to move forward with that safety warrant or article, so.
Well, if they don't, they should pull a town meeting. And they may, they may have concluded.
Yeah, so we might have more updates after tonight.
Oh, we will. I mean, I don't know about tonight, but, well, yes, tonight is also a selectmen meeting, I think. So they might now, you know, really, it was a 3-2 vote. And the swing vote was highly uncertain as to how we wanted to vote anyway. So one could say that they really are not of one mind on the board of selectmen. And sort of a tail, I view it as a tail wag the dog thing. A few pretty active people on that one project. There's really no other reason to have a town meeting. And they want to have a one-hour town meeting. Good luck with that. And, you know, so the way the whole thing's kind of silly, and maybe that'll go along. But if it does go forward, it's, either way, it's of no, I don't think the material impact on the region is zero. Right? You've got your 112, everybody's agreed to that. And whether Carlisle also has 112 is not material to you. And, you know, as I said last week, I think the main focus on our end should be scenario planning. So we have good fidelity around several possible outcomes.
Yeah, I think it's important that we bring, we do this work we're embarking on and have been doing for the last month and a half. And, you know, have a better, better confidence in the numbers and a better understanding of how we approach, you know, what are three different scenarios. It can morph into multiple things as we go through this first half of the year. But yeah, I think they're precious to them.
Okay.
Good.
Should we move to the evaluation? Or do we have more to talk to you on the budget?
No, that's what we have tonight. We'll keep you posted as we make our way through.
Okay. So Heather and Eva?
No, it couldn't be any, I don't know.
Cynthia and you.
Eva was gonna talk about this, so she just went off. Not off, but off.
I'm here, sorry.
Here you go, you're here.
It's, it's not easy to navigate those little buttons.
I know. Eva, do you want to walk us through the form that you sent us?
Yes, I'd like to walk through the form that I sent to everyone. And also, I don't know, did you get a chance to open it? I also send it to Erin, if that makes it easier. So everyone can see it.
So the question is, can you talk a little bit what your proposed timeline is?
Yes. So I would like to see that we still stick to the proposed date that we've initially discussed of June 16 to share the summary of evalu-, the summative evaluation with the public, which brings us to getting this, it is this done fairly quickly. So I know that Laurie has already started making those one-on-one appointments. People started discussing the goals met and evidence with Laurie. I do have the documents that I can share with, that I've already shared with you. So that's done. Let's see.
So just quickly, Eva, on that document, you sent it to all of us. If everybody opens it up, can?
Can we just finish the timeline?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, so the committee would receive the accomplishments rubric and begin appointment scheduling superintendent. And so that's in progress. Committee members submit completed individual evaluation by June 5. So the question is, would that be, you know, how much time does the committee need to go through the evaluation, go through the evidence? And I'm not sure if you had, go through the evidence provided by the superintendent. And she did a really nice job because we have links that direct us exactly to, to the evidence for each goal that she has, that she has been working on. And then we would come, create a composite evaluation by June 11. So that would be, that would be our date for me and you, Cynthia, to, to get everyone's evaluation and put it together.
So I'll speak for myself. There's no way I could get this done by the 5th.
Me, too.
Okay.
I would be challenged to even say a week later, but.
I think we need at least a, a weekend. And I don't know if everybody's had time to talk directly with superintendent, but just to get that done between now and the end of the week. Because, you know, both for her, who's gotta have a meeting with all of us and each of us to get that scheduled and do it. I think we need.
The calls have already started, right? Because Laurie sent us a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, she started speaking to some of us already. So I don't think it's a full committee that needs to speak to Laurie. But I'm, I'm open to, you know, to extending the timeline. If I understand it's, you know, we're, we're compressing the process. I was just trying to hit that June 16 deadline. If we can have a presentation later or, and the reason is why I'm, the reason why I'm asking fairly early for those evaluations back is to give everyone an opportunity to come back with any more questions or clarifications once they submit their evaluations.
So why the 16th? What's important about that day?
I think that's the day that we, you know, we initially came up with. What's, what's our, let's look at.
We could do another week, right?
Well, if we're looking at the calendar, I mean, if we're still, if we're assuming that we're still meeting weekly the week after that, we could do it the week after that.
I, you know, I figured I'll start on the earlier side versus on the later side to give us a little bit more buffer.
So what if, if I'm just looking at the calendar, if everybody wants a weekend to do it, what if we finished our individual evaluations by a week from today, the 9th?
That's supposed to be up. I like that.
And then Eva and Cynthia create the composite by, I don't know, how long do you want to do that? It's a bit of a project, I'll tell you.
I was gonna say.
What's that?
Do you think doing it in a week is, is unreasonable or reasonable?
To do that in a, in a week, let's see. If you have some time to work on it, you could certainly do it in a week. But to present it the next week, I mean, I think fairly you want to get, we want to be able to give it to Laurie before the day that we're presenting it. Just give her, give her some advance notice of what we're gonna say.
Very good, very good point.
So as opposed to that, if we're doing that, I think you'd want to push off the presentation to the 23rd, then, definitely.
That's what I'm proposing.
Right.
Yeah, and I think we want to.
By, let's say, the 18th or the 19th. And then, and then we presented the 23rd.
Okay.
Doable.
And, okay, good. And then, so by end of this weekend, we could see the evaluation. So put the date for Sunday. Is that what, what we decided?
What?
A week from today.
You said a week from today, the 9th.
The 9th.
Okay, June 9th.
May I put for the quick question about the template that was sent around? Original plan was to use a simplified evaluation process, not the DESI rubric, to look at and base our evaluation on Dr. Hunter's summary of her accomplishments against each of her goals. And then I'm, I'm guessing we added a couple of specific since COVID, quote unquote, criteria for evaluation. Am I correct?
Yeah.
The, the template basically drops her evidence to us into the state template.
Yeah, so I, I actually sent you a little, a simplified template just for housekeeping purposes. Hopefully, you find it a little easier to follow and fill it out to keep everything a little bit tidier.
Which, Eva, which document should we open?
So I am, so if you open the superintendent.
It's called Laurie Evaluation.
Laurie, yes, Laurie Evaluation.
Does it make sense to share the screen so we?
Yeah, that would be easier. Why don't you do that? Then we're all on the same thing.
So I can't, I can't share the screen. I don't know if.
I know a guy who can help you with that.
You want me to?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This way everyone can see it.
So once again, I think it's a DESI form with Laurie's.
Adjustments, yeah.
Role achievements dropped into the center column.
Yes, so.
With then two COVID ads to it.
With two COVID ads under, under standard. So, so as we are, so as we're going to be evaluating Laurie's performance and, and performance and looking at her goals, how she did on her goals, I was, I was looking at what Laurie has provided as a guidance and as a description of which standards and indicators to use as a descriptor of the performance. So if you look at the, the form itself, it will give you the description of the goals. And so for student learning, you will see the description of all the goals that Laurie set up for herself for, for this year, right? These are the goals for this year. So we will be evaluating these goals till March. So if the goals were, you know, were at the point that there should be when COVID-19 kicked in and we had to change the way we provide education, this would be the time of evaluation. And it follows Laurie, Laurie's document to the T, actually. So it's her goal for student learning, and it's her goal for professional practice, and then district improvement goals.
Sorry.
And.
Go for everybody.
Yes.
Here's the student learning, professional practice, and district improvement goals.
And I stand corrected on, on one item. These are her goals. It does not include what she sent us by way of bullet points around achievements. So each of us has to look separately at what she sent to us.
Correct.
Right, that's a separate document, but.
Yes. So I incorporated her document as much as I could into this rubric. So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to, we would have, you know, some sort of relationship to the document that Laurie has provided us.
So Eva, can I jump in and?
Yes.
I guess go through my understanding and make sure that I'm correct and see if, see if I'm seeing it correctly here. So the, this overall form includes all of Laurie's stated goals that we all agreed on at the beginning of the year under student learning, professional practice, and district improvement goals. And those three categories will each have their own rating, just one rating for each category, correct?
That's right.
The way you've laid it out here, okay. And then, and so just to clarify process, to Court's point, at one point, when we talked about this process, we said we were going to do it, or, or we recommended, or one recommendation was that we do it based only on those goals. So, but that's those goals there. Then this incorporates a second piece, which is the standards. And standards are more, the way I see it, at least, the how versus the what. The what are the goals that we all agreed to at the beginning of the year. The standards are how she leads, right? So the standards are, are how she does it. And the standards here, oops, where am I starting? Sorry, I keep scrolling as I talk. No, the standards start here. One being instructional leadership. And this is, so this line would be for instructional leadership during the COVID closure. And then.
Underneath, underneath, underneath.
Rating for overall.
Overall, very, very much overall, so.
Overall.
In, in a time that, you know, the time is of essence, we want to do the best job that we can without going into minutia. But I am, I am providing, and Laurie did provide with, with us, with, what do you call those? Not standards, the.
Oh, the indicators.
The indicators, thank you. She did provide us with indicators, just so, so it guides us in understanding at what we are looking at.
Right, so under each standard, there are usually multiple indicators. There are five to six, on average, indicators for each standard. And usually, in the typical evaluation, what we do is we fill out a rating, one of these four, on Sactory, Factory, Needs of Professional Exemplary, for each overall standard and for each indicator underneath it. So the recommendation here is that we're just doing one for the overall standard.
Standard.
And one for during COVID closure, but not looking, not rating all the indicators. Although you said there's somewhere.
Yes, there's another.
Look at the indicators to kind of inform what we're looking at to rate each standard.
Yes, and I did provide a highlighted description of the indicators that Laurie was, that do correspond to those standards.
Right, one of the other indicators attached is what.
Yes, yeah, so everything is in one place. So you would, if you were going through the form, you would put Laurie's form next to this form. And maybe the, you know, the description of the indicators just to guide you of understanding of what they're looking for. And then you would be able to evaluate her to, to assess, you know, what you are giving her and what input you would be putting in the comments below.
Great, so we each fill in a reading for each standard. Great, so we each fill in a rating for each standard during COVID and then each standard overall. And then.
An overall.
Bottom, and which is basically a summary. This part here, this rating of each goal is really a repeat of what we did above. Above it had more comments, and this is kind of a repeat for summarizing. And this is a repeat of each standard's rating from above summarized here.
Yes, that's correct.
And then the last step is an overall rating.
The last step is the overall rating. And, and that's what gets reported actually to, to MASC.
Right. Yep. And then, and then space for overall comments.
That's right.
Okay.
And then we would take.
I understand it that way. Is that clear to everybody?
Well, I have some overall comment. I really, as a personally, I don't feel comfortable rating Dr. Hunter on COVID because we're, do we, do we stop at the end of April? Are we starting, stopping at the day I write the review? We're just so in the middle of it. I just think we had originally agreed that we would not review her after Mark.
We can, we can.
Thoughts are, I just feel like this is just a very odd.
Well, the work is, you know, the work is not going to stop. So.
No.
It, it's going to continue. So up to now, I mean, I have, I am very comfortable saying, you know, that, for example, the professional culture, I would be very happy actually giving the, giving a response around the evaluation because she has been doing really a terrific job coordinating the teachers coming together. So, you know, there, there has been work done, so.
No, not, not, obviously.
It has not been completed, so it's not, so the COVID-19, after the COVID-19 is not asking you if the work is completed the way that the goals are asking. You know, the, it's not asking, it's, so the district goals, for example, or student learning goals, it's asking you, how did she meet? Or did she make progress? Did she, did she, did she meet her goals? The COVID-19 is not asking about reaching a particular level of a goal. It's really asking about, it's more descriptive. It's asking about how is, how has she been responding to the challenges that COVID-19 has brought in? And that's why I, I've added to, to the form to give, you know, full credit to, to the superintendent.
No, no, but I just thought we were, I'm just trying to, one, reduce amount of work that we need to do to roll this thing up.
Okay.
We originally agreed.
It's up, it's up to you. It's, I can.
What other people think, and if I'm in the minority, that's fine.
Well, to your point, Cynthia, we, I mean, maybe we streamline it. I would almost say the other, the other question too, again, given the timing now is, do we even want to include all the standards? Or do we just want to go back up to the goals that, that we all agreed on at the beginning under, in these three categories and just rate on those goals and be done?
That's, that's what I would propose.
Well, I, I will share with you that I've already taken Dr. Hunter's document, Superintendent Goals and Action Plans 2019-2020. I've looked at the various updates she gave us, including the most recent one. And I've already written up my, my evaluation based on it because I thought we were staying true to what I said at the outset. Simplify, number one. Instead of DESI rubric, we use, quote, "evaluation based on the superintendent's goals." And number three, that we use the standard DESI scale. That was the sum and substance of it for me. And I'd be happy, to your point, Cynthia, with not an evaluation per se, because we are in the midst of it, but perhaps in our narrative, we could reference COVID.
Sure. Of course.
So that would certainly streamline it. And that was, we, what we talked about earlier, I thought there was some, in fact, Cynthia, I thought you had said you wanted to include standards. But I'm, I was a proponent of just the, just the goals from the beginning. So I'm very happy with that.
It's easier during presentation to take things off the list than add them on. So.
Right.
Happy to do that.
So that also makes the process for you guys in summarizing it all much more simple because you have a lot, without the four standards and other categories and everything like that. I mean, it'll make it much more streamlined.
And I do want to say that the superintendent did a tremendous job providing all of the links and the evidence that corresponds to her goals. So it's, it's easy to find.
Right, and I just wanted.
There's a lot of work, you know, already done there for us.
Yes. And we'll make it clear that, that work is finished. We're not expecting anymore.
Exactly.
If that's the case, that's where we're heading. I think one thing that Eva just brought up is even more important to highlight. She was talking about in the, oh, oops, I lost it here. In the metrics ranging from did not meet to exceeded, Eva just defined it as, we will look at what was done by March when the world changed and say, if she was where she should have been by March, then that will be considered met. Right? And I want to make, and it, I want to make sure that we're all consistent on that.
Sure.
Versus somebody saying, oh, well, she didn't complete the full goal. And even if we didn't expect it to, or it was only significant progress, something like that. I think we need to be consistent on that. So is, is that, that's what you said, correct, Eva? And that's what we're going with?
Yes, so it would, yes, so it would end in March. And then in your, in your analysis or your comments, you can add in the post-COVID-19 comments. So that would be, you know, that would be the other area. If you, you wanted to comment on, on that, that would be the place. But we would add our evaluation in March, basically.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We are running out of time.
I have to go, I'm sorry. I gotta go on to the.
Running out of time, like in one minute?
Yeah, the CPC is meeting at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Most of the.
If everyone is okay with this, I can adjust the form.
Great.
If someone has done their evaluation, as Court has written his up, we, we can use that. He doesn't have to, you know, he doesn't have to go by. This rubric is just more for housekeeping purposes. So I will adjust, I will take off the standards then, from what I'm hearing, and resend it to everyone.
All right. We need to move to adjourn before, and roll call it before we get shut off.
Did you, did you want to go into executive session?
To go into executive session.
You did that?
So I'll read this quickly. I would need a motion for both committees, that the Conference School Committee and Conference Carlisle Regional Schools Committee will enter into an executive session under purpose two of the Open Meeting Law to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the Open Meeting Law to discuss strategies that affect collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and not return to open session.
So move for both.
Okay, roll call.
Mustafi, aye.
Oh, Mustafi, aye. Rainey.
Aye.
For both?
Yes.
Booth?
Aye for both.
David already left, right? Johnston?
Aye for both.
And about I for both. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Heather, Jeremy will be supporting you on your next call.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.